This meeting of the Redding Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being broadcast live at the RMLD's office at 2:30 Ash Street in Redding, Massachusetts. Live broadcasts are available only in Redding due to technology constraints. This meeting was videotaped for distribution to the community television stations in North Redding, Wilmington, and Linfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda as well as on items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. Just a few acknowledgements, there'll be no cab representative present this evening and anyone else in the public who wishes to be acknowledged, we can't at this time, but I don't see anyone, so we will move on. And John Stempack, will you be our Board Secretary?
I'd be happy to, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I'd like to begin this evening with a quick update on the Massachusetts Municipal Light Plants, or MLPs. This is a conference that a number of the Commissioners attended back in July 8th on the telecom opportunity today, and it was held at the Fiz Berkman Center for the Internet and Society at Harvard University. So, at this event, one of the major items presented was Holy Oaks MLP has a telecom division that was successfully adding competition in the business sector, and they helped attract a $90 million computing center, saving the municipality more than $300,000 a year by providing network services for the city. This was done without issuing debt, raising taxes, or affecting electricity rate payers. As a Board, we've already recommended that this topic be studied within the RMLD territory. The RMLD and the town have fiber loops up and running, and we already lease some of the fiber. However, there is still spare capacity, so that's the opportunity to be considered. We've seen that an MLP telecom offering can provide revenue and also boost economic development. However, we understand that for anything to move forward, the town governments and RMLD leadership needs to be actively engaged in identifying the opportunities. So, in summary, we'll make this process part of our strategic focus during the upcoming meetings for the Commissioners, and there's also, and I might add, some of the information I'm reporting tonight is courtesy of Dave Talbot, he's absent tonight, as well as Dave Hennessy, two other Commissioners, and Dave Talbot has informed me that there's a follow-up meeting in September, September 29th, at the NEPA headquarters in Littleton. So, at that event, the expectation is there'll be an MLP roadmap for how companies can, in this area, can pursue opportunities for their communities and discuss ways for collaboration. So, more on that in the coming week or so. So, that was an overview. I know, John, you were also in attendance, if you had any other comments you'd like to add?
Yeah, I thought it was a very good session, it was an all-day session, and I think it gave us good visibility into what the rest of municipal light plants are doing within Massachusetts. It's quite eye-opening in terms of what they could do. Most of them, of course, are pursuing business customers, and I do think that we're perhaps even a step ahead of some of them because we've been doing, pursuing business customers for a number of years now, and so perhaps it's incumbent on us just to make sure we're getting a fair market price for the services that we're offering, and then to obviously expand it from an economic development perspective for all of our member towns. But overall, I thought that the day-long session was quite good.
Yeah, so, that's a good point, John. So, in addition to the town of Redding, we certainly will want to include the other towns serviced by RMLD in the discussions. I'd also say, one of the considerations is, you know, there is opportunity here, but we also want to make sure we manage the time and resources because we've already heard in recent months a lot of the good projects that are on the slate as a result of the reliability study and the organizational studies, and those require resources, funding, and above all, attention units on the part of the operation staff and the Board to the extent that we have involvement, so it's just a note of, you know, we want to be appropriately involved, but also cautious that we don't spend more time and resources than is necessary in terms of what the benefit is. So, we'll, that's the whole purpose of pursuing that, and so we will, as I said, report more in future meetings.
Colleen, anything to add?
Okay. So, the second item that I want to discuss is the formation of the General Manager Review Committee, so everyone should be aware that as part of the ongoing process, Colleen, who's our General Manager, is entitled to and should receive an annual review, which includes compensation review as well, a performance review, and review of compensation. And so this is the time of year, so what I'd like to do at this point is recommend a subcommittee, which is how we've handled this in the past. That's, I think, should be straightforward because usually we have three of us, and since we're missing two and there's three here, it would seem logical that John and also Phil join me as the subcommittee, so I'd like to make that as a recommendation. Any discussion or other comments or suggestions?
I think we have fairly well a lot of criteria we used last year, and I think we'll definitely be on time this year, as I delayed it ahead.
Right. Yep. And for Colleen's purposes, whatever the final recommendation comes forward as per agreement, Colleen's performance review and any recommended increase is effective as of the start date for her contract.
And then also setting objectives for the coming year, too. Should be part of that also, right?
Exactly. Okay, so, can we entertain a motion for approval of the committee?
All right, I'll move that John, Phil, and Tom be appointed to the General Managers' Review Committee.
Okay. All in favor?
Geno, Phil, and all the complete names, I'm sure.
That's the gist, yeah.
I'm in the ten or less line tonight.
Okay, so that motion carries 3-0-0. Next on the agenda is the approval of the Board Minutes from February 26th.
I'll move that the February 26, 2015 minutes be approved as presented.
Any discussion? Is that appearing? All in favor? So, motion carries 3-0-0. Okay, at this time, would ask Colleen for her General Manager's Report.
Thank you, good evening. As, as everyone knows, because we've commented on tree trimming for quite some time now, we went to a new contractor through our RFP process. We now trim based on spans as opposed to ROEK. Mayor was the successful bidder. We changed the tree trimming to a three-year cycle. We cut in prune, in a directional, for the health and aesthetics of the tree. We are still in the town of Redding, cutting only up to five feet, whereas when we went to each of the towns and spoke to the town managers in the selectmen of the other towns, we presented the vegetation management plans, and they were approved, I believe, and we went to eight feet. The purpose of that was that that's a standard utility cutting back, four, three-year cycles, so that you're not wasting time and there's efficiency in not bringing trucks back into the same area. We've been extremely happy with Mayor, they are, you know, they get their trucks, they eat in their truck for lunch, and they just keep rolling. And I think it's, you know, it's very refreshing for us because the program is working, we're getting our money's worth, but we're finding that in the town of Redding, it's, it might be putting a little bit of a burden as far as customers calling for the tree warden and the assistant tree warden. So, while we have communication established in all four of the towns, we met with the town of Redding, tree warden, assistant tree warden, DPW director, the Conservation Commission, myself, Chief Engineer, Hamid, to go over how we could improve the communications because that's really what the issues were. For example, we were, we emailed the tree warden every single day of where we're going to be trimming. The trimming map is on our website, so anyone can see where we're going to be trimming, but because they're pretty straight out with their work, they, it appeared from the meeting that we called that they didn't have enough time to review it, so what we're going to do now is we're going to back off from Redding, go into Wilmington or something, we're going to prepare a one-month map and present that, and then they'll have time to look at it and discuss different issues and how to trim, and then there'll be an approval, vegetation management plan approval for that area. Another thing that we're going to do is tie in the Conservation Commission into the loop. We provided some education as far as when lines are touching trees, wood does conduct electricity, if that primary is laying on that tree in such a way, you could have a child touch that tree and they could get hurt. So, while the tree warden is in the business of preserving the health of the tree, we are in the business also of preserving the health of the tree, but also trimming it back to remove any immediate hazards. Something else that was learned is that, you know, trees touch wires going down a street, and when you have a circuit and you have a fault, you may have a number of burn marks on that wire all the way down the street, and I don't think it was realized that we have to trim each of those trees down the street trying to find the fault, because if the lineman, excuse me, was to put that cutout back in and the fault remained, that could be very dangerous for them. So, that's why when someone says, "Well, if that was the tree causing it, why did you trim out some other trees on the street during the emergency?" And that, that is the reason. So, what we agreed to, if there was any subsequent trimming that we didn't finish that had to go to the next day, we would then call that loop of people, and everybody would come down and they could take an assessment of what we've done, what was the emergency. So, those are really, and the integration, the vegetation management plan, right? The, what's that? The Integrated Vegetation Management Plan, the tree warden is reviewing it, and he isn't going to get back to us on it, and then we'll be going to the eight feet. So, we have minutes of the meeting, I think it was a very productive meeting, we've come up with some informs, we've revised the vegetation management plan, and they're going to be presented next week. I think this will help eliminate some of the concerns. It would appear to some people that this is a little bit more aggressive than, than what perhaps Aspilin was, was doing, or what people were seeing, but rest assured that, you know, the safety of the public and the workers is number one, you know, the aesthetics of the tree, how we directional prune them, and working cohesively with the towns and the tree wardens is, is what we're trying to achieve here. So, it was a great communication meeting, and, you know, we'll have some feedback, and if we need another one, we'll do that.
Good. Just to add on, so, as a result of a communication from a concerned citizen of Redding, I had the opportunity to communicate some of the information that Colleen shared, particularly around the advance notice when they're preparing to, to come and trim the tree, so I think that response was well received. There was two, so, Colleen, if I understood it, so, is Redding, I guess I was on the impression Redding is currently at eight feet, but they're now at five feet, but we'll go to...
No, right, we've never gone to the eight feet. We presented it to the selectmen, and once we submitted the IVM to the tree warden, it gets reviewed, they approve it, we go to the eight. We hadn't gotten that back yet from the Redding tree warden.
So, there was two, two follow-up questions from this particular individual. One was the, I guess, more a concern around, is eight feet going to be too long a span, you know, versus five feet in terms of protection?
Actually, eight to 10 feet is the standard cut. IOUs, the independent utility operators, they, I mean, they have a larger territory, they go to 10 feet. You know, depending on the species, you know, you can top cut silver maples, they won't hurt the health of the tree. I mean, this is why in this particular RFP, as opposed to the one that was here before, we have a master arborist as part of that contract. You know what I mean? So that they're working with the tree warden, and we, you know, we are taking the health of the tree into consideration in everything that we cut.
So, that, let me play that back, so that could mean eight feet's the norm, but given the individual circumstances, health of the tree, it could be less than eight in that particular situation?
Well, it depends on the species and the growth.
Right.
I mean, you're not going to really trim out anything that's not, you know, you're trying to keep that distance based on the growth of the tree.
So, it's not a, it's not a prescribed eight feet, no matter what it's going to be?
No, 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 no. It's a clearance from the line is what you're supposed to be maintaining.
Right.
You know, so it's only what's, you know, so if you have a tree that's growing directly underneath the lines, you're going to have to top the tree. But there's a number of species that are not hurt by that type of thing, and typically towns wouldn't plant, you know, they'll, they'll plant trees right under the line, so...
Right.
That would be the first area, and, and a lot of times, if, you know, you'll see a lot of the older trees that were planted because they couldn't be topped or whatever, you'll see these big seeds where the wire's going through them, and...
But it's just to be, is the five feet and eight feet clearances or actual cutting amount?
Those are clearance, well, they're clearance cuts.
Clearance cuts.
So, if it's touching the wire, you would trim it back eight feet.
Right.
You know, so that it's an eight-foot clearance.
Yep, okay.
The other thing, too, if you don't mind me mentioning, just to reiterate, we do not cut private property trees unless there's a hazard. If someone has a private property tree that's laying on their service line and it's smoking, we will go in and we will remove the hazard. We don't want to take liability or responsibility for the health of that tree, we are simply removing a hazard. And it's the same thing if you have a tree that's growing out into the street that's actually owned by the property owner and it's laying right into a primary. I mean, it, it's, you can watch the YouTube videos, I mean, it's just a matter of minutes before the tree will catch on fire and the wire will be on the ground, and that cutout may not always open.
Right.
So, you know, so those are the only two areas where we'll even touch private property trees, but for any large tree that might be going onto the primary, even though it's private property, we'll probably, you know, discuss it with the tree warden and...
Yeah, I think the process that you have is good because it involves all the stakeholders in the town, the tree warden. The only follow-up question regards to the changeover from, you know, hours to spans. The question was raised, you know, understanding that obviously there's pluses and minuses with either process, but when it comes to the spans approach, what controls are in place or need to be in place to prevent it from being, you know, I guess the theory being, you know, hourly, maybe it's going to be done very slowly and carefully because, you know, there's no rush, of course, that also adds expense, but from a span approach, does that encourage, you know, a faster, maybe less cautious approach to the tree trimming?
I don't believe so. I mean, we're, we're, what you get out of the span is it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter how many hours it takes, it's a span, and 120 feet is a typical distance between two poles.
Right.
And it's going to be trimmed to, so that they don't, they have to come back for three years, they're not going to trim more than what the vegetation management plan says. It's being looked at by the tree warden, I mean, from a, from a cost-benefit standpoint, this is a much better situation for Redding Light.
Sure, clearly. Yeah, I think the assumption is we've hired a professional organization who's going to take the care and attention to making sure it's, gets done correctly.
Also, if we add the Assistant General Foreman, Matt Brown, he's also in charge of tree trimming the program, so he's following them and checking to make sure the quality is...
Right, his monitoring.
Was that Ameed?
Matt Brown.
Yeah.
He's Assistant General Foreman.
Yep.
And he, every morning, while he's assigned to work with the tree crews, he's going to follow them to make sure, and check the work, making sure they're doing a good job.
Good.
The tree warden and assistant tree warden said for the most part, they were happy with, you know what I mean? It was just in certain cases, if they hadn't gotten out to look at that streak, even though it was emailed to them, it's hard to say what was there before if a customer is, you know, has an issue.
Yep.
But we're resolving that, so...
Yeah, no, I think their response has been great. Obviously, you know, we appreciate citizens who are concerned about, you know, the natural assets of the town, but as you pointed out, there's a balance, there's safety and, you know, health and safety issues along with the, you know, concern for the environment, and sometimes those aren't overlapping, you know, and clearly, safety is always of number one importance. Good. Any other comments from the question?
I think that the other thing we have to keep in mind, I'm sure that they do as they're cutting these trees, is the rationale for the length is we have such terrible weather conditions in the wintertime, and the trees on the trees, I mean, they can easily dangle down and break the wire, so it's not just a matter of looking at the tree under typical growth conditions in the summertime, it's, you have to think about what's going to happen in the wintertime as well.
Right, exactly.
Good.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you, Colleen, that's a great report. Okay. Now, I think we'll have a power supply report from Jane.
Thank you. I'm going to go over some highlights from the report. Created a few graphs to review the month of June preliminary, this is just prior to the close of the fiscal year. So, this graph depicts the energy usage and the peak demand for June. The yellow bar is the energy or the megawatt hours. If we look at that comparing last year to this year, we had about a 1.7% decrease in our, our energy usage. In comparing the demand, it went from 142 to 138 for about six and a half cents reduction. So, the, the spans are a little different, so it might be not as dramatic, but there was a nine megawatt drop in June this year compared to last year. And it's mostly weather-related, it's all weather-related.
Yeah.
An interesting observation that we looked at from the customer's perspective, we looked for the fiscal year, what the average cost of energy. The energy component represents about 50% of the bill, and so if we look at the last five years, in 2011, our average energy cost was a little over 5.7 cents, and then if we compare that to this year, it's just really at five cents. So, the last two years, it's been pretty consistent, and I think that's helped with the natural gas, with some of our portfolio purchases and our laddering and layering approach, and that's brought some stability for our, for our customers, for all customers. The next graph looks at our energy resources by June. June was a good month for us, our average cost of power came in around $43 per megawatt hour. Typical usage, 15% of our power came from nuclear, 9% was from hydro and wind resources. We bought 9% on the spot market, 64% was allocated to our power supply RFPs, and about 3% came from our Stony Brook and our lots of plants that run on natural gas. So, that's pretty typical for the month of June. This next graph, for June, the transmission costs seemed to increase significantly going from this year to last year, so we took a look at that, and there's a trend, an upward trend here. There's two components that go into the transmission costs. It's the rate that we're charged by the regional network service, which is a socialized rate from all of New England, and then it's our peak demand. One thing that I want to note is the way the ISO builds transmission, it's a one-month lag, so the June transmission costs are actually reflective of our May peak and our May charges. With that said, the rate going from 2014 to 2015 increased by 2.4 cents. However, the peak demand went from 101 in 2014 to 138. So, there was about a 30%, 37% increase when we look at our peak demand. As I said earlier, that's really caused by weather, and so if you look at cooling degree days from May of 2014 versus May of 2015, in 2014, we had zero cooling degree days in this, in the Boston region, and then in 2015, we had 18. So, we had a couple of consecutive days of high 80s, low 90s. By the time you get to that third day, that has a direct impact on our peak demand. So, I thought that was kind of interesting. That's Bob, so I don't want to steal his thunder.
Jane, just a question on the energy by resource, and maybe you've said this before, so do you have sort of a pro forma budget that you target at the beginning of the year where you, because I'm sure some are more cost-effective and desirable and available than others, so do you start out with kind of a, here's ideally what the pie should look like, and then...
Yeah, we have, we have a model that looks at, at the prices of our resources within our portfolio, some of the policies where we have, where we have, there was a push to get some renewable projects within the portfolio, so we take all those things into account. The tricky part comes with the units that we own, not necessarily the nuclear units, but the natural gas, because those get bid into the market, and depending on whether that unit price clears or not clears, that unit will be turned on or off. So, that's really dependent on the natural gas prices, the load of the region. So, ISO New England dispatches those resources based on need, and then there's a settlement process after the fact. So, we, we have projections for what we think on an annual basis and monthly basis those resources should be.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Jane?
No.
Any other questions for Jane?
Nope.
Great.
Looks good.
Okay. Ameed will now do the engineering and operations report.
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening. The first slide, yeah. Well, under the capital improvement projects, I have four categories, and you have the dollar values in your packet, but I'm going to bring them, so I go through each one, and I'll put on the slide. And the construction projects, we, in the month of June, we spent $28,231. That includes the projects for Lowndes Street to Wilmington, upgrading the old Linfield Center, Cook's Farm, and...
Yeah, let me get a different cup.
... and West Street.
Okay, good, thank you.
State projects. Lowndes Street is 75% complete, Cook's Farm is 60% complete, the URD for all farms are ongoing, and we got 60% completed on West Street, which is a state project. And in the category of the new customer service connections, these are the service installations for residential, we spent $9,800. And in category of special projects and capital purchases, we spent $79,137 in Monta June, which includes the transformer purchases, capacitors, meters for the 500 communication equipment, and LED street lamps. And under the fourth category, routine constructions, in the month of June, we spent $138,604, which is our year-to-date, to $1,860, $734. The next slide shows the routine maintenance, we got several categories, transformer replacement, we got the 1,860 distransformers that are over 20 years, that are going to be addressed and they're going to be replaced. Under the pad mount transformers, underground, the green box that you see outside, outside the buildings, we got almost 12% completed, overhead category, 9.39% completed, so we're making steady progress on those. The next category, pole inspections, we got 110 poles that have been replaced, out of those 110, 60 poles, they've been transferred, and we're making progress on those two, to take the devils poles from those areas as well. And then the visual inspection of the overhead lines, we got 20 feeders for this quarter that were inspected, the listed notes are on the slide. The manhole inspections, this is pending, and the reason for pending is that they'll be waiting for the GIS data collection that, you know, we had the RFP out, they're going to start the work by mid-August, and as they start on that, they're going to be funded with the underground, also collected data, or with they collect, or with we collect, and they're going to make some progress on those, to check the assets, there will be good assets in the manholes. The porcelain cutout replacements, we got 2,799 we started, 90% of this day is completed. The tree trimming, we, from the January to June, end of June, we had 1,500 spans completed, which brought the value to, we spent $216,000. In the month of July, that we're at now, so far in time... In the month of July, that we're in now so far, we've got about 137 spans. All of 3,986 that we budgeted for FY15. Substation maintenance, infrared scanning was done for the month of June. We couldn't find any, any trouble at any of the substations, so everything is, uh, going well. At the parks as well, parks, uh, the river park, the, uh, Amrock Places, as well as the water, they scaled, I think it's, uh, the...
Right.
Uh, the next slide is the reliability for the month of June, the SAD system average interruption duration index and customer average interruption, interruption duration index. They're both well-handed in national and, uh, regional averages. So we're doing good on those categories. And the next slide, that's the safety, the system average interruption frequency index. And as you can see, for 2015 so far, you know, we're all, uh, well-handed in national and, uh, the regional, uh, bench warning matters. The next chart shows the category, the order to year-to-date from January to June 2015, which the majority of the, the order of the equipment, trees and some wildlife. But, uh, if you notice from, uh, the trees, they've gone down six feet, change, or a tree trimming cycle. And now that's hopefully going from five feet to eight feet, increasing that, uh, so that number should, should move down, which is, uh, correct. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd want to have...
Yeah, Ameed, I thought in a earlier conversation, you had mentioned that, uh, the, the opportunity, and maybe that's in a future meeting, uh, so we had all the reliability study recommendations and, and I know that some of them have already been approved. But am I right in saying that, uh, in a future meeting or meetings, we'll be able to kind of see the projects that have been in...
It's, it's done.
It's done, okay. Hope we're...
I wanted to be able to make...
Yeah, it's, it's a present, excuse me, can I, may I speak for...
Sure, of course.
Okay, um, it's a, I think we were asked to do a September presentation.
Oh, yeah, good.
So, um, yes, what was recommended, what we, um, accepted, when we're working on, who it's been assigned to, um, but all that was...
Great, excellent. I was just previewing it.
Yep, there you go.
Good, thank you, Ameed. Okay, uh, that takes care of our, uh, engineering update. And, uh, now financial report and sales trending update, Bob Fornia.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still in the process of, uh, closing up the year in numbers. Uh, I'm still waiting for some, a couple of key figures to come in. But my prelim numbers right now, um, showing about 2.8 million of net income, which represents about 6.2% rate of return. Like I said, he's a very prelim. Um, we've got a couple of, two of the innings, uh, pieces I'm waiting for to make that number go higher. The drivers are coming out August 10th, so I have until next week to get all the, uh, the data together. People have promised me externally to make sure I have these numbers, uh, on a calendar basis. But no surprises so far, through the, uh, we're at FY15, everything's pretty much, uh, as we anticipated.
Great.
It's good financials. Uh, last year during the, uh, auto presentation, our brothers and friends and people had mentioned that YASB 60 would be taking effect in FY15. There are really projections right now for the unfunded liability portion to our pension fund is about $5.8 million. So what this will do is, uh, one, affect our P and L, but it'll all affect our balance sheet on the liability side and on the net pension, on the position side. And they'll explain that more when they do their presentation, uh, in September.
Great.
And, uh, yeah, my, my, my graph here, that showing the kilowatt hour sold just went back to 2011, 215. Uh, nothing new here, uh, even though, uh, sales were flat this year compared to last year, the overall trending is kilowatt hour sales down. Uh, shaking hand, giving you here, but, um...
Well, it's something I think we're all feeling, right, Bob? And, and the compound average rate on that is about half a percent to a percent. Uh, or so, it's been kind of going down. I think those were the expectations that we, and hence what we can do from a economic liability to either increase revenues or, or do something different, uh, here as well.
Right, boy.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions for, uh...
No. No.
Okay, uh, we have some bids.
Okay, you want the motion?
Please.
Okay. Move that bid 2015-13 for line truck lift equipment inspection and preventive maintenance service be awarded to James A. Kylie Company for $105,345 as the lowest qualified and responsive bidder on the recommendation of the general manager.
Second?
Okay, any discussion? Not appearing all in favor? Okay, motion carries, 300.
Ready for the next one?
Please.
Move that bid 2016-07 for replacement of circuit breakers be awarded to Wesco for a total cost of, what?
1605.
What is it? 1605?
Correct.
The agenda has 16...
Yeah, that's what I know.
Okay. All right. Let's start again. Move that bid 201605 for replacement of circuit breakers be awarded to Wesco for a total cost of $5,49750 as the qual- as the lowest qualified bidder on the recommendation of the general manager.
Second?
Okay, any discussion? Not appearing all in favor? Motion carries, 300.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, we have some, uh, board meetings, uh, in September and October, Thursday, the September 24th and Thursday, October 29th, so...
Mm-hmm, yep, that's fine.
I think the I had to put those on the calendar, I'm pretty sure.
Yep, they're fine.
Okay.
We have the NEPA conference too.
Yeah, we have the NEPA conference. And I think, I think we have, uh, 100% board participation? Yeah.
Good, good, great.
Uh, and, uh, also one of our commissioners we presenting here, Dave Talbot.
That's correct, yes.
Uh, regarding the fiber discussion. So the next item is the policy committee and we need to, uh...
Need to set up a meeting for that?
Yep.
You'll, you'll email us and get some dates.
What, uh, maybe we should, just for guidance, for, uh, for Gene, do we want to... August probably is not a good month. I don't think we need to have one in August, do we? So I think we'd always sort of play, maybe September?
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 Yeah.
Well, you could do the jam and then follow us when we're sent to you. It's important to do.
Yeah.
Cause you're all in the same unit.
Brilliant, yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Two birds are on stone.
I like that idea. Okay, and, uh, we have a August 12th cab meeting. Do we need, uh...
Uh, Dave Hennessy's going to cover it.
Dave Hennessy has that, that's right.
Okay, Dave's going to cover it, okay.
Okay.
All right.
So, uh, we have a, any other business, uh, Colleen, do you? Good?
No.
So at this time, uh, we want to move that the board would...
Yeah, I'll move that the board go in executive session to approve the executive session meeting minutes of February 26th, 2015, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property relative to RMLD's fiber, Verizon pole agreement and to return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second?
Do you need a roll call vote?
Yes, roll call vote.
Okay.
Ms. Pacino, I.
Okay. Tom Horrodt, I.
John Stupped, I.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, very good. We're good.